If you'll join, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First item tonight is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. The only discussion item that I'm aware of is that I think it doesn't really change the agenda, but I think we're going to handle the public comment and discussion portion of the two public hearings concurrently because they're so intertwined and they're so connected. So that's the way to we're going to move forward on the when we get to the public hearing. All in favor of approval.
Aye.
The agenda is approved and that's the next item is the approval of the minutes from the July 18th regular meeting of Planning Commission. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? Meeting are so approved. Tonight, we have two public hearings. It's a recommendation on an ordinance to amend to the official zoning map to rezone 526 acres from the rural RL District to the Village VL District. The property is again 526 acres and four corners of Cochran Mill Road and South Fulton Parkway. The plan for the proposed village has been revised by the applicant since the asked visited on this issue at a previous Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is Harrison Merrill of WHM Chattahoochee Hills Investments LLC. The second public hearing is related. It's a recommendation on an ordinance for a variance to the required zoning district buffer in the Village District. The request is to reduce the required district buffer from 100 along a portion of Cochran Mill Road and to reduce the required district buffer from 300 feet to zero feet along a portion of the south side of South Fulton Parkway and from 300 to 60 feet along an additional portion of the south side and a portion of the north side of South Fulton Parkway. The property is 526 acres and again located all four corners. Are the buffer variance requests needed, but not at this point. So at this point. You can get a copy of them if you'd like at the desk. Each side, those supporting the issue and those opposed to the issue shall be given equal opportunity to address either the Planning the Planning Commission. Each side will be given 10 minutes. Let me stop right there. How many comment cards do we have, Mike? Let's increase to start it with 20 minutes. Again, so each side will be given 20 minutes to present their facts, data, evidence, opinion. And time for each side depending on where the comments coming in. The applicant may take as much and a lot of all of the support. Or in opposition issues shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. The clerk, in this case, Mr. Morton is stepping in for that, will inform the speaker when his or her time is up. In consideration of other persons who are registered to speak, speakers shall conclude their comments promptly upon notification. Mike, is that three minute clock over there? Robbie, is that working for us or not? Okay, but you're gonna, okay, but that's not something for them to look at. Okay, okay. If time for a side of the issue remains after all speakers of that side of the issue have spoken and written, do we have any written comments? Okay, fine, then that's kind of moot. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall complete a public hearing card to present it to Mr. Morton, in this case, before the beginning of the public hearing portion of the meeting. When recognized, each speaker shall state their name and address for the record. All remarks shall be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole and not to any member or to the audience. To ensure the opportunity for all those desiring to speak before the committee, commission, there is no yielding of time to another speaker. There's may not employ, well, there's in unemployment obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors shall have the microphones disabled and if necessary, shall be removed from meeting. I'm sure that will not be necessary. Speakers shall maintain its manner and tone. Again, I'm sure that will be, that is understood. So let us begin. And shall maintain its manner and tone. Again, I'm sure that will be, that is understood. So let us begin. And shall maintain its manner and tone. Again, I'm sure that will be, that is understood. So let us begin. The, if you'd like to, would you introduce the two matters?
Actually, you've done a pretty, a pretty good job of that already when you introduced them. I did have a little bit more in your packet. There were two pages or page and a half of snippet details off of the plan. Those unfortunately were the details off of the old plan, the original, original version. So I like to pass out replacement, replacement pages. The single page replaces the page and a half. They appear right in front of the, the application form in your packet. So this is the correct information. That unfortunately was, was incorrect information. I would just point out that this project has been on City Council and Planning Commission agenda since October of last year. Four meetings in City Council and I didn't count, but every month except one or maybe two in that period in, I'm sorry, in City Council, four and Planning Commission and, and almost, almost every month since then in, in, in City Council. It went through the state's DRI process, developments of regional impact process, which involves a traffic study and a, a finding by the Atlanta Regional Commission and a finding or a notice of decision by Greta, Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. Those are, both those reports are, are in the packet there toward the end. And there were some, there are some recommended conditions that were not in the original version of the packet that was put online. They were put online yesterday. So some people, if they got the information off of the website early, maybe missing the, the recommended conditions. Everyone on Planning Commission received an email with them when, when they became available, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that as well. The owner also has a project in the, on the neighboring property in the city of Palmetto, which is a separate project over which we have no control. So anyone with comments or opinions on that project, that's not something that we can really address in here. But the 525 acres in the city of Chattahoochee Hills between property and Cochran Mill Park, that's what we're, we're discussing today. I do have, if I may, a couple of questions on the cards. There were a few people who didn't say whether they were in support or opposition. And really, the only purpose, the only reason I need to know is to know whether to have you speak in the support section or in the opposition section. So I'm going to read three names. I may butcher one or two of them. But if you could let me know whether you want to speak in the support section or in the opposition section, that would be helpful. The first one I've got is, I apologize, Maury or Moki. I'm sorry, opposition. Okay, great, thanks. And see. Elroy Windsor? Okay, also, okay, okay. And then Brandy Walsh. Okay, okay, great. So all of the cards are for speakers in, in opposition. So it would just be the applicant in, in favor.
We'll open the public comment period now and those in support of the, of the proposals here and the applicant and or his representative decides to speak, they're welcome to speak now. But please do identify your name, address.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Ryan Snodgrass. 1447 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia is my address. I'm here as the client representative for this case. As mentioned, we have been working on this for quite a while. First meeting with city staff in 2022 and then first filing a public application the following year. Since then, we've been represented at most of the, the meetings and as well as having private conversations with various updates. So with that, I'm here to present that latest update. Since we last spoke earlier this year, I believe it was April of 2024 that we met with many of y'all to discuss the plan as it was at that time. Changes are on the land use plan is where I'll start with are pretty straightforward and they work based on our conversations from earlier this year. And honestly, it's what we see is, is making the plan better. So originally in the Northeast Quad, we had a mixed use component that was brought down or an institutional use that was brought down into the town center on the south side of the parkway. And so now where you see the big swath of yellow there on the top left of that plan is now intended to be a residential development as stated in the current application. The mixed use component that is within that quadrant of the development, you see the little area of red is within the phase one that that plan has been detailed out and provided on the far right board that you see there. The phase one of our development is a mix of single family detached townhouses and small multifamily ranging in unit size from four to six units each is what's expected at that point and proposed on that plan. In addition to that, within that mixed use area is very limited retail as stated on the application. And actually this, that retail not only will, is intended to be targeted towards users of the parks space, but also towards those residents within that quadrant as even if I was in the far top corner of that yellow area in that quadrant, I'm within a 15 to 20 minute walk, a very comfortable walk for that phase area. So creating a neighborhood commercial type situation there on the fringe of the town center with the town center being the core of our development there in all the blue just south of the parkway. Another big change as far as land use categories go since we last spoke that came out of the conversation was the institutional use that was proposed in the, what is the Northwest Quad. But looking on that plan, it's at your bottom left. This area is now identified as a campus use, however. However, today we do have an exhibit to help explain and provide inspiration imagery.
That's right. I just wanted to confirm.
Okay. So we have a new exhibit today that we would like to share and put on the record that starts to illustrate the design intent behind each of these land use categories. It will also start to illustrate the intent behind the reduction of the buffer, specifically the 300 foot buffer at the parkway frontage as well as give design intent in the frontage for the Cochran Mill Road south of the parkway, the area that where the buffer is requested to be removed so that we can have a healthy town center approaching both sides of the road. As stated as a condition, if you have reviewed those, you'll note that Cochran Mill is stated to expand with the development over time. It's a condition from staff that, that we are in agreement with and actually was part of the DRI discussion as well from a traffic standpoint. And so we are illustrating in this new exhibit how the buildings may be placed on the park on, excuse me, on Cochran Mill Road today, but still allow for that expansion of the right of way when the appropriate time comes, when that threshold is triggered based on what stated in the DRI. With that, I don't want to share, well, share too much more is what I was going to say because you're already familiar with it. And I'll reserve the rest of the time for rebuttal. However, before I do that, I did want to present this exhibit, which I stated, and we will have copies that we can share for further review and put into the record. I'll get those to Mike tomorrow. So we're very pleased with the way this is showing out. You'll see that of course, phase one is all detailed out as currently shown. We're calling these test bits because they're not, that's the intention there is showing what can happen or the design intent behind each of these land use categories. You'll again see the frontages on Cochran Mill Road as well as how we're interacting with the buffer windows here that have been requested on the parkway. So with the 500 foot window on both sides, yes, we would like to have building footprints in that area. That's the intent of that window to approach the parkway and know that the town center is at that portion. Where we reduce to the 60 foot buffer, the intention is not to provide more buildable environment for building footprints by any means. And you see, we're actually are rendering it as a park and we are fine with that being placed in a condition to confirm that aspect there. Because the only reason to open this up is this is the location of the pedestrian tunnel that goes under the parkway as well as as a natural environment here, natural swell, excuse me. And so to take advantage of that topography from a stormwater management side, we open up view shed windows from a public safety side and the trail coming through creates a very nice amenity right as you enter into the town center core. So we are very happy and pleased with the way that is shaping up from a design side. On the cross, on the north side of the parkway where we have also requested the 60 foot reduction or excuse me, the buffer be reduced to 60 feet on the parkway. This is for that opening up the window as well for the public safety for the trail coming through. You see it stops right just past the tunnel. It also allows for actual development of, of this portion of the site. The, the environmental constraints in this area with the floodplain, the 75 foot setbacks from Little Bear Creek as well as the intense topography in this area. We need as much room as we can to appropriately develop it without having to do a mass grading scenario. If you start to study the contours and the building placements, you'll, you'll see how they are stepped with the environment to reduce the grading and impact on the environment as much as possible and to feather that out as well as to get the, the density needed to appropriately implement phase one. We need that space. So A, you're coming in from a safety standpoint and B from, to help reduce the intense grading of the topography at that situation. With that, I will pause and reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal. I will leave this rendering. Nope. Okay, I will take it.
For purposes of the, of you illustrating what you were saying, I think it's okay because nothing that you, you were illustrating isn't already in the figures in the zoning, but we can't accept new evidence unless we ask for it. So that can't be part of the.
Alright, thank you.
Are there any other applicants? That are in support, any other speakers in support?
No. Okay. I apologize again with any, Ms. Masias is, has the person arrived yet? Okay, okay, I'll put that one at the end. Okay, Sharon Beener.
Good evening, Planning Commission, my neighbors.
You would introduce yourself and where you live.
My name is Sharon Beener. My husband and I live at 8550 Wilkerson Mill Road at the corner of Cascade Palmetto Highway. We are in opposition to this development as it is outlined today. On the rezoning of the 526 acres from rural to village, I would ask that the Planning Commission and the City Council, when they meet, ensure that as they consider this, that they are given every opportunity to preserve the look and feel of our rural community and make sure that it's maintained before approving any village or hamlet. And so in considering this request, I ask that you think about how many villages or hamlets this small community can reasonably contain and preserve our rurality. Does the scope and expanse of this project meet our vision for a village? Will the duration of the development this project will place on our community? Will it place our community in a never ending cycle of disruption by construction, particularly at those four corners of South Fulton Parkway and Cochran Mill Road? Is this developer someone we want to work here? Are his interests truly aligned with ours or is his interest just self-serving? And void of consideration for the residents of our community? That segues me into the second request for this property and the development to reduce the required buffers in the current, it's currently rural, but it was listed as village in that second one. From 150 feet, I'm not going to read through all that. You all know what it is, but I'm opposed to reducing any of the buffers. I think that, I'm stick to what I wrote here. In the first two reductions, Mr. Harrison is asking for absolutely no buffer, 100% reduction, which I think is absolute, absolutely just ridiculous. And, and then in the latter two reductions, a reduction of 80% from, you know, whatever it was, 300 feet down to 60 feet. I think that's unconscionable in a, in a community that is rural like this, when you look at the landscape that we currently have. The buffers are required as a part of developing property within Chattahoochee Hills. On the smallest lot that I own on the corner where I live, it is the most that Mike's familiar with, it is the most oddly shaped lot that we have. But there were things that I wanted to do there, like have a garage. But the lot just would not, you just couldn't get it in there right. And where we have to park our cars is really on the side of a road, so we couldn't put a, a structure there. So then you just have to adapt and that's what I'm asking you all to tell this developer that he needs to do. Adapt to what our regulations specify. Although he might want to develop on other land there and use it for something.
That's three minutes.
You just can't.
That's a second warning.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you, ma'am. Sorry. Next is Lori Searle.
I'm Lori Searle. I live at 12600 Whiteside Road. I'm opposed to this development. I was a little confused at the start of this meeting that there were two public hearings. One to talk about approving this, changing the district and then the other for the, for the variance request. So I'll just say, if, if I had to do both, I would, I would support the plan that was presented December 2023 to change this to the village designation. That plan required no variances. It meant all of our zoning requirements. And somehow or another, it fit in everything they needed in their plan in the designated area without buffer windows, without, you know, disturbing the buffer on the parkway. Anyway, I would support that with one caveat. We talk about Cochran Mill Road and that in the future, it's going to have to be a boulevard because this is going to be a major town center. We haven't really discussed that. It's a scenic byway. That may not mean much to many people that have recently moved to Chattahoochee Hills, but before our city formed, it meant a lot to the residents that lived here. It took a year to designate that. And it is listed on our road, our scenic roadmap with 150 foot buffer. So I would just caution that before any plan, even, even though the DRI specifies, hey, the traffic count suggests it can support this. It's got 15 road cuts on Cochran Mill Road, our scenic byway. Come up with a plan. Ask the council and you guys to have a joint meeting and sit down and talk about what this is going to look like. The developers said they can't just submit phase one and have you vote on it. They have to submit the whole thing in order to start the TDR process and know how much acreage and the allowance they get. So anyways, I would just caution on that to talk about that. A few things I want to talk about the buffers. They talk about buffer windows and allowing the buffers on both sides of the road. That was only initially discussed on roads that were not scenic byways. So I have that from the comp plan changes and from the zoning. It's only allowed on non-scenic roads. So that's a big ask. Our buffers are our holy grails. That's all we have in the RL District to separate us from development. And I'd ask that you really carefully consider not allow, not supporting those. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Jean Griffiths.
Good evening. My name is Jean Griffiths. My wife and I own 30 acres on Wilkerson Mill Road at 9595 Wilkerson Mill Road. Our property immediately abuts on the western side, Mr. Merrill's property. The property also has on it a historic grist mill, the last standing grist mill in Fulton County. We bought additional acreage in 1985 of 12 acres in order to extend our outside boundary 150 feet along the west, the north and the east. This was to make sure there was no visual problem with development in the future from what we had. So we are against, as it obvious, the variance for buffer change. And we particularly are interested in protecting the viewscape and the historic nature of our property.
Next is Anita McGinnis.
Hi, I'm Anita McGinnis. My husband and I reside at 11845 Upper Wooton Road. I would like to say that I'm against the village as it is proposed. I do not feel as though the village should be on all four corners developed. Cochran Mill Park is our city gem and you're wanting to back it up with development. You're going to run off nature and everything. It's rural. It needs to stay rural. That's what people come down here and ride those bicycles for. Do they get on our nerves? Yes. But do we, do they like what we like? Yeah, they do. That's why they come down here. Business should not be on that side of the road at all. If you're going to allow him to do this, buffers are there for a reason. That's what we like to look at. We don't want to see all of the businesses and whatever, when you're riding down the road, you want to see the trees and leaves and nature. He had property that he could have used that village for. He took it out of our area because our zoning was too tough for his development. So he put it in Palmetto. It could have been used for this. It could have took some of the weight off of our park and off of the parkway. It's still going to mess up Cochran Mill Road. It's still going to mess up the beauty of it. You guys need to think long and hard about this and it needs to stick to what it was supposed to be. Please, I'm asking you, keep it rural.
Thank you, ma'am. Donald Ross. No? Okay, okay. So just oppose. Okay, okay. Ryan Scorel. Scoville. Scoville, my apologies.
Hi, I'm Ryan Scoville and I live at 12325 Garrett's Ferry Road with my wife and three kids. I'm thinking allowing a major development will bring in a lot of people from outside of our community who may not share the same ideals as we do to keep the community rural. Our current population is around 3,000 people, having Having 2,500 residences with an average of two people per residence will be more than double our current population. People living in these large complexes do not have the same mentality as we do living in single family homes on acreage. There'll be new voters in the community. They may not have the same keep it rural mentality as we all have. And they'll be in favor of even further development. I think this is the beginning of the end of the rural aspect of our community for which it was founded. As far as Cochran Mill Park goes, according to the schematic on their website, they plan on putting up residential complexes at the entrance of Cochran Mill and South Fulton Parkway. This is going to ruin the rural aesthetic when driving into the park. And I wouldn't be surprised if you could even see tops of buildings when standing at the main falls. Over the years, the park has seen an increase in visitors. And because of this, we have seen an increase in pollution and vandalism. Having 2,500 potential residents in close proximity to the park is going to dramatically increase this problem. The approval of development is going to create a domino effect in our community. We may benefit from an increase in tax revenue, but this is going to be offset by the need to increase our community resources. We'll need more first responders, more equipment, bigger facilities, more money spent towards maintenance on vehicles, roads, buildings, the park, the list goes on. So what happens next when the increased tax revenue is still not enough to maintain this new growth? This will create an opportunity for the next investor to come knocking at the door, trying to get more land rezoned for further development once again. This will continue to happen until all the undeveloped land is sold off and developed. And we will have lost the original vision for why this community was created. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
So far 10 minutes and 30 seconds have been used of the 20. Elroy Windsor.
Good evening. I'm Elroy Windsor. I live at 6585 Jenkins Road. I am living in a home that is in the near the northeast quadrant of this proposed plan. My home qualifies as an adjacent or nearby property. I want to start by pointing out an error made by the developer's attorney, which was corrected in the 11823 letter, which mistakenly kept in what was business concerning the city of Alpharetta. And that letter from the attorney, I think, shows the true colors of the developer's ideas. And trying to make that area surrounding the gem of the city, as was previously noted, like the suburban area of Alpharetta. And I oppose this for several reasons, which the, according to our code, the planning commission and the city council shall consider the following standards concerning rezoning. One of them I want to speak to concerns the existing uses and zoning of nearby property. Around this and including in where I live, this is designated rural areas. Nowhere in the developer's proposal do they address the light and noise pollution that will inevitably be caused by what I'll continue to describe as a monstrosity of development. We know there is going to be significant environmental impact here, which I do not believe was properly addressed in their proposal. I read regarding the water, the wastewater, the idea that Fulton County is going to be running sewer lines there. When that will happen, who knows? But we also have to think about water supply issues. I didn't see that addressed. Perhaps I missed it. The other thing I'd like the planning committee to consider is the idea that whether the zoning proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. Their answer to that factor was the proposal should not adversely affect. Well, I would say that that is easy to say when your primary concern is about profit and not about preserving the reality that we are trying to keep this area rural. I am a new resident to Chattahoochee Hills. I came here in 2018 and I came here because of the rural features of this area. And I urge you to please consider this and deny the proposals, both for the rezoning and for the reducing of the buffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy Walsh.
Hey, my name is Brandy Walsh. I live at 7440 Little Farm Parkway. I live at the end of the street and at a very low point. So I know the waterways are behind my home and then go behind his home. And then over to Cochran Mill, which you guys are planning on developing. And I'm here just to say that those waterways may be compromised. And I just wanted to let y'all know that I enjoy Cochran Mill every day. I go out there, I go for a walk and I enjoy those features as much as I possibly can. So I'm in opposition so that I can continue to enjoy what everyone else here is stated very eloquently. But yes, so that's pretty much it. I just want to keep our water clean and I want it rural. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then as the person, okay.
Good evening. I'm Okeem Musias. I also live on Jenkins Road. And I, I think, you know, the, the points have been made really well here tonight as to, you know, all of the reasons that I also oppose this development. I oppose the rezoning, of course, and I'm horrified frankly by the recommendation to basically remove the buffer zones entirely. But I wanted to share with y'all just a little story, which is that in 2011, I was completing my master's degree in city planning over at Georgia Tech and, and was the first time I had heard about the city of Chattahoochee Hills. And it was being held up as a model of development. It was being held up as something that was so unique, not only within the suburban sprawl that we know is metro Atlanta, but frankly, you know, around the country as an example of being able to do development differently and to do it in a way that is really balancing the needs of not only, you know, businesses and the residents, but the needs of the land itself and of nature and people's access to nature. And so I got to come down and I interviewed folks and learned more about the history and, you know, got to learn about Chattahoochee Hills. As a student of city planning, seeing this as really an example, an exemplary model of city planning. And then fast forward, you know, about 10 years later, 15 years later, is it? Where I was able, I had the opportunity to actually move here to Chattahoochee Hills from Atlanta. And so, you know, I, I want to say that, you know, as a new resident, this is why I came to Chattahoochee Hills, right? And I've been able to get to know people who have been here a lot longer than I have. And I find that I have shared the same values with them around being able to be a part of nature while being also a part of a community. You know, especially with Cochran Mill Park. What I love about it is that it actually does attract people from all over, right? So I don't think this is about like, oh, we want this to be an insular place where there isn't an exchange of people from, you know, different areas of the city or even the state, right? But I love being able to go to Chattahoochee Hill, excuse me, to Cochran Mill Park right down the road for me so that I can take my kids and my dog and be in community with people that are coming from all over the metro area to be able to enjoy this jam that is, as people have said, really the heart of our community here. So I would just second along, you know, alongside all of the folks here tonight, that this just feels like such a departure from the real spirit of, of why Chattahoochee Hills has developed the way that it has. That I really, really hope that y'all consider that this is not inevitable. It's not inevitable that we go the way of Alpharetta. It's not inevitable that we go the way of every other community, literally every other community that surrounds the city of Atlanta. We can be different and I think you'll find that you'll have the support of residents, both old and new to continue like that.
10 seconds.
Thank you. Mr. Mark.
Three and a half minutes.
I, I would suggest that we invite anyone who will sign up as opposing to have additional comments so they can come up and make additional comments at this point by virtue of the fact that we combined the hearings. Is if any of the people that have signed up to speak would like to add, I was thinking of you, Lori, actually.
I, I want to talk all the time, but I did want to mention the city-owned cemetery on Cochran Mill Road. So that was gifted by a landowner several years ago. And I've been involved over the years with families that still visit there and then their pasture. And last year we noticed while we were visiting that there's hunting stands on there. So there's poaching going on and you know, big surprise, right? Undeveloped land that no one lives by. My concern is that phase of the project could be 25 or 35 years build out. If no one's watching it and there's no buffer, that just invites illegal activity. So if that is the commission's recommendation to not have a buffer there, I'd like to suggest you might add a condition that the developer add a fence around the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition that would like an additional time? I believe that the applicant's representative has reserved time. Is that correct? And that time's for rebuttal if you would like to address any particular comments, you're welcome. How much time does he have, Mike?
He used 7:45 originally, so. It's got, yeah, 12:15.
And I will, I will not take all that time. So of course appreciate the public comments tonight. And as we were listening to those, I did want to just respond briefly to some of them that here. So, you know, a lot was brought up about why the village in this, in this spot and, and, and also the city shouldn't accept villages. Well, you know, as part of the, the initial zoning code of Chat Hills when it was established, it had a village component designation to it. And it's always been centered on the parkway. It has changed over the years. It has morphed from specific nodes at the intersections to a literal buffer that goes off the center line for however many feet in each direction, I can't say. But it's quite a large buffer range if you look at it today. And that's all on the comprehensive plan that directs future zoning and development for the city. So while yes, today, the, the property within this future over, within the village overlay district is zoned as rural as well as many other projects or properties zoned rural. Those were, those were flat rezonings when the districts were created. Because there was only one village that came in with the city, with cityhood, and that was inherited from the, from the county. This is, I believe, possibly, and correct me if I'm wrong, the furthest a new application for a village district has, has gone this far. First in this, yeah. And so it's to no surprise that it's raising a lot of eyebrows, making a lot of people worried about the intent behind it. But I'll say it's always been in the code. It's always been established that this is the appropriate area for it off of the parkway. And so with that, you know, also I'll say with the buffers, the buffers on site against any of the existing rural districts, we are, the buffers are implemented. They are there. In fact, site wide of the whole 526 acres, 26% of that is dedicated to buffer evergreen screening on the site. And that's, that's a huge percentage of the, of the, that's over 100 acres there. That is dedicated to the buffers. With the last comment that was brought up about the worry of the, the city-owned property there with the, the cultural, the heritage cemetery. You know, as, as the development builds out, you can only bring it up, possibly even a condition just to remind folks that as the development builds out, but that's a potential green space so that that can actually be a usable city park that highlights the city's history and the county's history of that cemetery. And make an actual place for those residents who have family members in that area to come and, and visit within that environment that will not be disturbed, but will provide them with better access to it. Also, let's see, have some random notes here from when I was going through. You know, I actually might have hit everything, so I will not hold up anyone else's time. Yeah. Oh, one last point I'll make. The jewel of the city, yes, we totally agree. Cochran Mill Park is a fabulous amenity. And how lucky are we to be adjacent to that? Also, those buffers are in place against the park as well as north of the parkway on Cochran Mill Road, full 150 foot buffer, sometimes even exceeding that due to environmental reasons, which all of the environmental buffers for the state, local and federal are in place as well. So with that, I just wanted to make those clarifications from the comments. And then I will step down and be available for any questions, should there be.
Thank you. The public comment period of the hearing is we will move to discussion and this will be discussion among the, the commission members. I think to start with on this, Mike, would you please present your recommendation? And anything else you would like to present at this point?
Sure.
We did finish everybody.
Yes, we did. We did. We did. We got everybody. Yeah. I would just like to mention a couple of things that weren't mentioned originally at the, at the head of the meeting that I was kind of reminded of in, in the discussion. And you can take them as they are. The, as Ryan pointed out at the end, there always have been villages imagined in the planning for the city. Before the city became a city, there were three designated village sites. Early in the city's history, that was changed. Well, actually, some of those sites were removed from the city before or at cityhood. One of which is the, the Merrill Park location that's now in Palmetto. The other is the existing Friendship Village site, which is only about one third in, in the city. So this site is in, completely enclosed in what we've defined in the future development map on the, in the comprehensive plan as the preferred village area. So it is cited in the, the location that the city has said. For villages, this is the area we want them. Now, this is a unique site because it is divided by two rows. It divided into four pieces. Most of the planning and code development assumed for the most part sites that are off the road or border road, but aren't divided up in this, in this particular way. I would also point out that the Merrill Park development in Palmetto has their zoning and they are not, they don't have buffers on the Palmetto portion of the road. So we would expect some disruption of that rural character along that road as one travels along Cochran Mill Road in the area that the city doesn't control. And so this is an area that's sandwiched between that and South Fulton Parkway with the lack of buffers down there in South Fulton Parkway. So in some way, it's, it's a, a little bit of an extension. The city's overall plan is to preserve 70% of the land in its current state as much as possible. And then have hamlets and villages that are protected by buffers. Developed, preserving either internally in the case of hamlets or preserving land externally in the case of villages. So the land that remains rural, not rezoned as hamlet or village, is currently protected by zoning to some degree, right? We limit the, the size of the lots that could be created, quite large, 20 acre minimum. And now, so there's, there's a limit on what can be done. But those are rules that can be changed with the winds of politics. And so the goal in the whole plan from the beginning has been to create a method for permanent preservation of the land that, not only the land that goes into villages and, and, and hamlets, because they are required to do preservation, permanent preservation. But also to provide permanent preservation of what is the rural area, what we all understand to be the, the rural landscape now. That's done through the TDR program, transfer of development rights. So the mechanism is to harness this development pressure and the money that pays for development to fund the preservation in the rural areas by paying the rural property owners who are interested in protecting their lands, pay them to permanently protect them with conservation easements. And then the development rights come off of that land. It can't be developed anymore and those development rights go into the town. If there is no demand for TDRs through either a hamlet that can add a little bit of debt. If there is no demand for TDRs through either a hamlet that can add a little bit of density through the TDR program. Or towns which are required to and have the most potential to drive preservation, to fund preservation. If that doesn't happen, then there is no permanent preservation. Now, the politics may stay the same forever and the land may be protected forever. But if it doesn't, then we may find that the protections we have now through zoning can disappear. And you find that those twenty acre properties become little fifty house subdivisions. So there is a real need for the permanent preservation of, of the rural land. And the method in the comp plan, in the city's whole, the whole plan for remaining rural is, is that TDRs drive that. And so this project, if it were to be approved as proposed with two thousand residential units. Would create demand for fourteen hundred and seventy-five, fourteen hundred and seventy-four, I'm sorry. TDRs that would fund the preservation of, in theory, of at least fourteen hundred acres. Outside of the, of the village, so that's kind of one side, that's the. For people wondering why we would even consider such a thing, right? Why do we have villages in the first place? Why would we want to allow any dense development in the city? Understandable question, that's the reason, it funds then the preservation outside of village. The.
Thank you, I appreciate, I think that's very helpful, I think it's very helpful background in this. As I'm looking at your recommendations.
Yes.
The recommendation is staff recommends approval of the rezoning ordinance with conditions.
Correct.
And there are like twenty-eight conditions with multiple parts to them, so there are a lot of conditions.
Definitely.
And the variance for the reduction of the buffer on Cochran Mill Road.
Correct.
And, and that, that is the recommendation of staff, is that, that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I think we'll move to, to. The, the discussion and normally the way we do this, we have a, a motion and a second and then we discuss, you know, under the. Under the umbrella of a motion. If, if, if that is the. That is what the commission would like to do. Proceed that way, we'd like to make a motion. But I think we can, given the complexity, or if you'd like, we can move straight to discussion if you'd like.
Let's discuss.
Let's discuss.
Let's discuss.
Yes, okay, let's discuss it, I want to put this in a little context. Our, our charge here is. Is only considered fourteen conditions. That is what our job is. And fourteen standards. That's publicly available in that, that. We have already addressed. Previous plan that was last October, November and December. And we, the planning commission at that time voted to approve the rezoning, it was significantly different. Ms. Searle mentioned it, I think in there, that there were no buffer, no variances at all. And so that was what this planning commission recommended for approval last December. The. The buffer variance is a little different. We consider the fourteen standards for zoning, but you consider them. And, and there's some weighting on, there's some balancing that can go on there, but not so with the buffer variance. The buffer variance says that it has to be all five criteria. That are in the code and you could find that on pages seven to eight of the packet, so that's. That's what our charge is, I think we should, at some point in here, we ought to, we ought to focus on. Standards and. Then, and the five criteria, part of our. We'll say this, what you handed out at the top, Mike. One of the, one of the clarifications here is that in the text and in. Is this work or are you trying to? Okay. It's phase one, how many units are actually proposed for phase one? A hundred and twenty-one, not forty-one as you may see in the thing. So I wanted to clarify that, so phase one is the, the, the upper northeast corner on that thing, it's upper left. It's the, the, the yellow block that has the red, the red mixed use part of it that I think is called the hub. So that's the, that one's not forty-one units, it's a hundred and twenty-one units that are being proposed there. And that was, I think, the part of the clarification that you, that you wanted to make there, so. Discussion. Would anyone like to start with this discussion? Yes, ma'am.
On the buffers. About putting parks in the buffers.
Right, so the required buffers on, on the parkway.
I'm, yes, you mind walking up to one of the. So I think it's, it's going to be helpful to clarify that.
So for everyone, I don't know how familiar you, everyone is, north is this way. So you're looking at how it's going to lie on the land, it's actually, actually like that. South Fulton Parkway, Cochran Mill Road. This is City of Palmetto down here. This is the Griffiths property with the, with the mill. And this is a hamlet already rezoned, two hundred and. Fifty-six, two hundred and fifty-six acres. This area on the side of their open space, mostly few sprinkled houses, most of their development is a little farther. Closer to, on Jenkins Road or closer to Jenkins Road, still buffered, although they did get a buffer reduction. Because that was completely off topic, partially developed. So the requirement in the zoning is. Side of South Fulton Parkway, so you can see they've got it here, they've got it here, here and here. The South, South Fulton Parkway corridor owned by GDOT, owned by the state, is also three hundred feet, so you have nine hundred feet. Between here and here. They have shown, they are showing a, a complete elimination of the buffer for five hundred feet on each side. On the, on the south side, but on each side of Cochran Mill Road. And then a, a reduced buffer down to sixty feet here. We've learned from what they presented that they intend for this to be a park, so what it would be is not, not buildings, but open, open. So you would, you would have view in there, but not actually buildings that close up to that sixty feet from the parkway. On the north side, they've shown a reduction, I don't recall this distance. But down to sixty feet here from the one hundred and fifty foot buffer on Cochran Mill Road. All the way to where the underpass is under South Fulton Parkway, I don't know how many people are aware of the underpass. It was installed, it was built when the parkway was built. And it's right basically under the mile, right under the mile marker that you pass as you go, as you go by. So they're showing a, a reduction to sixty feet there, the requirement would be three hundred in the code. Is that though? Answered? Yes. Sure, so Cochran Mill Road doesn't. Cochran Mill Road doesn't have the same buffer requirement the parkway has, it's a hundred and fifty foot buffer. Just like the exterior buffers are on the outside, hundred and fifty feet required, which they're showing, it's a different, different story. But around where they're next to the rural district. Buffer, and they're showing a hundred and fifty feet of buffer down here to the south, but they're showing for about two hundred linear feet of Cochran Code. And eliminate buffer. The village there and kind of like a, kind of like a main street kind of, kind of environment. So you would have buildings facing the street, shop fronts facing the street there, if that were approved as, as proposed.
And the hundred and fifty feet on Cochran Mill is because it's a designated scenic byway. Well, on Cochran Mill Road.
Yes.
I think all.
That's right, that is right, that is right. It would, it would be on a non-scenic byway where you're on both sides, it would be just seventy feet.
Right.
But for your normal, or normal road, whether scenic or non-scenic, if you're on one side, it's a hundred and fifty.
And I think there may be only two roadways designated as scenic byways in the city. Are there more? I'm, I know.
Campbellton Redwine, Hutchison Ferry and Cochran Mill.
Well, I think I'm missing Hutchinson Ferry, so. Yeah, around the cemetery, what's going on around the cemetery with buffers?
So they don't own the cemetery, the city owns the cemetery. So that's not a part of the application. And so since it's not a part of the application, it would remain RL, which is the current zoning. Since it's RL, there would be a buffer, it is a buffer required, hundred and fifty feet all the way around it. So that. Shown on the original plan. They're showing no buffers around the cemetery.
Right, and on the plan that we looked at in December, there was none of, none of those varied buffers.
That's correct.
Okay, did that answer? Is everyone on the mission, everyone pretty solid on where the variances are asked? Oh, that's fine, thank you, Mike. The buffers. And I think the comprehensive plan is. Not as clear as it might, might be with respect to. The, the buffers and villages. There's no question that this is a preferred designated preferred village. Which basically runs along South Fulton Road, South Fulton Parkway, starting at Campbellton Redwine intersection. All the way to the eastern or park of the city for about a mile and a half, though on even. It may be different than. It's been designated as a preferred village area, if there are going to be villages in the city. They need to, the preferences to be along South Fulton Parkway. And a lot of it has for traffic too, that it's going to force traffic onto South Fulton instead of. Preferably through, through a lot of the, the thoroughfares in the city. And I think that, that, in my recollection, that figured prominently in our decision of the planning commission. That, that without the variances, that this was a. It was, it was an acceptable location for a village. And that I believe is what we recommended, is that fair enough? Yeah, I think it's fair enough, there were other factors, the conditions as well. And by the way, the conditions are quite extensive, I don't think we're going to have time. But there, we have several that we, I've got some questions about as well. In the. The, the comprehensive plan makes it, also uses the term, I think you quoted in there, that villages should give a small town feel. They should have that kind of feel, but it also, also gives a lot of. A lot, a lot of time to the importance of buffers. And the importance of the keeping the rural aspect, the rural, the rural vision. And the UDC does that just as much. And, and, and this comprehensive plan does mention. Windows along thoroughfares that you can see commercial development. For the, I think the stated purpose of trying to promote traffic to the commercial. We're going to have villages, you want them to be successful. And so the, the comprehensive plan contemplates. Some limited type of, uses the term limited type of windows along thoroughfares, but the UDC narrows that. The Unified Development Code narrows that and says, and excludes scenic byways and excludes South Fulton Parkway from the windows. And so this is a, these variances are serious requests, they're serious requests. They're, they're not frivolous, there's rationale for them, but the, the question is, and I think some of the commentary. From, from the community emphasized that the question is, is it too much? Are the variances too much? And, and so I'd invite anyone else if they have thoughts on this to, to jump in and ask questions or make comments.
I take, one thing Mr. Snodgrass said. Is that it's the jewel of the city. We moved here a year ago. It's not the jewel of the city, Chat, Chat Hills is a jewel. The entire city is a jewel. And. I'm not good at public speaking, I wrote down a bunch of things I want to say and I think it's very important, especially hearing. What you all have to say and what the neighbors. And I, I want you to hear me, and I'm saying this from my heart and as an expert, just to give you a little background on me. In nineteen eighty-two, I went into my own business in the real estate business. Developing, owning and operating by. We were on the verge of going public. And then I got sick in two thousand and four. I've taught for many, many years seminars at my alma maters, which are Brown University and Columbia University Graduate School of Business in real estate finance. That's my expertise, I know very little about a lot of things, but I know development. I know finance, I know valuation, I, I know operations, I know when people go belly up and I know what happens. And. I just want to speak, I'm speaking to you, I'm speaking to them and I'm speaking to the council. And I'm new here, this is the first time I'm in this, in this situation. As you know, several weeks ago, we were invited to meet with Harrison Merrill. To more fully understand the project he is going to develop. I in fact did meet with him, I don't know if anyone else met with him one-on-one, but I did. With Mike and Robbie. And I found Mr. Harrison to be very cordial, a real pleasure to converse. And in one word, I found that he is a gentleman. He provided me with a plethora of written materials. And I read through all of them. At first, he began to walk me through his Foxhole Resort, which is located, I believe, in Douglasville. A very short drive from where we are now sitting. The way that he was talking, I envisioned a bustling eleven hundred acre resort. With hundreds, if not thousands of people scurried about, cars, horses, et cetera. As he was speaking, I skimmed through the brochure and noticed a headline that read about a four hundred and fifty room western resort. The materials go on in detail that it is owned, planned and entitled to forty-five hundred lots. Six hundred thousand square feet of commercial use, eight point one million square feet of residential units. By two thousand and fifteen, nine years ago. Phase one was to have been completed to have two hundred and forty-eight attached single-family houses. And three hundred and ninety-six, three hundred and ninety-seven, single-family detached dwellings. By two thousand and twenty-eight, four years from now. It indicates one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine attached dwellings and fifteen hundred and forty-one attached units. Plus retail, police, fire stations, et cetera. It will have a built-out value of two point five billion dollars as it is completed in the next twelve to twenty years. It was impressive. He then moved on to describing the Merrill Park Project, which is the subject of this meeting. In his own marketing materials, here is a summary. Two thousand acres, ten billion dollar development. Fifteen million square feet of commercial and residential development. Seventy-five hundred residences, university of universities, medical facilities, possible martyr station. All at the corners of South Fulton and Cochran Mill Road. As a real estate principal and professional, I was astounded to hear these metrics. I asked him how long this would take to complete and he looked at me and said, this is a fifty to sixty year project. I know what firsthand with these types of projects require in terms of expertise with regard to design, contracting, financing, marketing. Accounting, legal representation. Before founding my own company as the co-head of the mortgage and finance department at Jones Lang Wooten, the predecessor to JLL. I represented major, major developers in New York, Los Angeles, Chicago, and rarely did they hit this level of magnitude. In addition to the above, I asked him what he thought generally about debt. About placing loans on properties that when they falter, the loans don't get paid back and the owners who have equity get wiped out. He looked at me in the eye and said, I love debt. I left that meeting shaken because I knew that what I just heard, if ever seriously undertaken. Would be the recipe for a potential disaster economically for all concerned, meaning the Chat Hills community and my neighbors at large. I was determined to dig deeper, so I took it upon myself to visit the Foxhole Resort. I was determined to dig deeper, so I took it upon myself to visit the Foxhole Resort and to see for myself if this was a vibrant bustling development. What I found was an incredibly beautiful scenic acreage that looked as if a hydrogen bomb had hit it. No human beings. I passed what looked like single family residence, possible hotel-like buildings, and there were maybe eight or ten of them. Not a single car, not one was in the parking lot, no horses, no vehicles, nothing, nada. I did see four to five cars parked in the parking lot by what looked like a small clubhouse, and perhaps that is where the offices are located. Remember, he had represented thousands of homes, six hundred thousand square feet of commercial, et cetera. It wasn't even close. Now I was very concerned, so I did a little more due diligence and found that apparently in nineteen ninety, Mr. Merrill's publicly traded real estate company went bankrupt. It sounded likely wasn't that, wasn't the first time his projects failed. For example, I read that in nineteen seventy-four, certain of his other projects failed. I read around nine, uh, two thousand eleven, an arbitration panel decided that he owed forty-three point six million dollars to the FDIC alone. So what happens when a bankruptcy such as these occurs? Well, the lenders never receive back their money, investors are wiped out, towns are left holding the bag for half-finished projects. They become unmarketable and many simply become ghost towns. Who would want to live in such an environment? No one. It's a total nightmare. Based on my experience and background, I take my position with this group, with this commission, very, very seriously. It just was thirty days ago that I was installed. Our neighbors, our neighbors are counting on us to look out for them and our entire community to do what is best for them writ large. So, armed with the above knowledge in mind, I took some time and very casually and spoke with maybe forty to fifty of my neighbors at the Serenby community where I live. I basically asked, what would you think if South Fulton Parkway was expanded to be an eight-lane highway? Eight-lane highway, South Fulton Parkway. How would you feel is if those four corners of Cochran Mill and South Fulton, thousands of homes were erected, including commercial buildings? What would you think of the possible ruination of our beautiful landscape, possible environmental contamination, unthinkable traffic of both cars and trucks, noise pollution, et cetera? Let me restate. Expanding South Fulton to be eight lanes, plus have a martyr rapid transit, close your eyes and let that sink in. Let that sink in. And then think what will need to take place to accommodate those eight lanes with the residual roads like Rico, Cochran Mill, and all the other roads where I peacefully take my bike rides every day and don't worry about getting run off the road. Trust me, you have no idea the ultimate chaos that could be the, the result. I know. I've seen it. Each of, every one of my neighbors that I spoke with looked at me in shock, in total disbelief. First, they had no idea that there was such a plan. Next, that there would be this hearing today. Small white illegible signs scattered within the community doesn't cut it for such a consequential undertaking. They were upset. Next, I drove around Chad Hills and to visit with the non-Serenby neighbors. I took that as my duty and my role as a commissioner. The same thing happened with each and every one of them. I drove up, introduced myself and laid it out, and their disbelief, shaking heads, no, was a hundred percent. I want to again summarize what is planned. Ten billion dollars, two thousand acres, fifteen million square feet of commercial and residential development, seventy-five hundred residences will take fifty-six years. Just for reference, One World Tower in downtown New York is three point five million square feet. He's talking about fifteen million square feet. In addition, Mr. Merrill told me at our meeting that once he secures a variance, he planned on somehow separating the project out so that he can sell off parcels to the likes of Pulte, D.B. Horton, Toll, et cetera. That's what he told me. In, in other words, exactly the type of developers we don't want or need in Chad Hills. I've seen this before and it would never work out there. There would be conflicts amongst the parties. Some of them would experience possible financial difficulties, and who would be left holding the bag? Us. It doesn't take an expert to see that this type of development, or even close to it, will completely destroy this part of our beautiful town. We have seen no financial data, no detailed site plans detailed, no phase one and two environmental impact statements, updated, updated traffic studies, summary of partners and their respective roles, et cetera. Who comprises the management team? What is their experience and backgrounds? What have they done in the past? Therefore, I am advising in the strongest possible terms that this application be rejected and quite frankly, the entire project be placed on hold, full stop. Mr. Merrill, you have a Mr. Merrill, you have a beautiful, ready to build property in Foxhole Lane. It's gorgeous. It's all set. It's all set to go. I visited and saw it firsthand. Some, you know, the trees have been removed, they cannot be replaced, but you can erect your thousands of homes. They have commercial structures. It's all set up, more than shovel-ready. On reflection, I've thought about this a lot because there's a, well, what do you, what's the alternative? What are we going to do? And I have an, a, an alternative solution that could work, provided the community would be in favor of it. Simply put, we could assemble together and it wouldn't take very much, and I'll tell you why. A meaningful and responsible master plan, which be towards a modest development that would be separated from the current residential areas. This would not be difficult because we already have onboard consultants, which I'd met with the other day. There were two out of three of them. They seemed very, very competent. They were into stay, uh, sustainability and they were very, very knowledgeable. Uh, we could have completed a sort of master plan, very code. Uh, I was, we could then put the plan out to bid and owner developers could bid on it. Mr. Merrill could bid on it. It would be our plan based on what we are commo- community wanted, not vice versa. Not what the developers wanted. I'm a developer. Believe me, I've been in their shoes. I, I, I know they want to get the variance, that'll create the value, and once they get the variance, that's it. We'll have no control over anything and they'll do whatever they want.
Could you please address the?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just, I'm new, I'm new.
Yes, indeed.
We don't need developers who are only out after the almighty dollar telling us how to live our lives. We have available to us incredible expertise from both UGA and Georgia Tech if needed. And at the end of the day, we may decide we don't want any of it. And if we don't, I've got a solution that may work in securing significant tax revenues that no one would even see and no one would object to, but that's down the road. So that's my statement. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I hope it wasn't too rambling. If it is allowed, my experience, my, my position is that Chad Hills, we love, will never, ever be the same, not even close.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not good at this. And I mean to answer any questions you have.
Well, indeed. Um, we have, uh, we have a more prescribed, um, job description, shall we say here. Much of what you say is, is probably for the council and probably for their consideration. Uh, this is being recorded, so they'll be able to, uh, hear your comments. I think that, uh, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we focus on what our specific, uh, specific area of, of, uh, our charge is, which is to consider the specific factors that are set out in the code to make a determination of either, we have five types of determinations we can make. We can recommend, and these are recommendations, recommend to the city council to dial. Uh, we could recommend approval. We could recommend approval with the conditions that staff has suggested. Approval with conditions revised, or we can postpone. We can, for receipt of additional information. That's the scope of what we can, you know, evaluate here. So I'm going to try to refocus here for just a minute. I do appreciate your comments. It's not that. It is, uh, we, we have several conditions, um, for, to consider for the rezoning and several conditions to, to consider for the, uh, for the, uh, variance. Uh, Mr. Morton has put together his evaluation of those conditions. Um, again, if you want to refer to it for the zoning change, it's on pages four through six. Um, and I'm going to ask if there are any particular questions that anyone would like to ask about the zoning.
I'd like to just ask a point of order. I know the two are intertwined, but at the, the issue at currently at hand is the rezoning, correct?
And we will then talk about the, the public. Yeah, so correct. There are fourteen, there are fourteen, uh, standards. Uh, they don't have the, not every one of them has to be met, but there's this rationale in there that Mr. Morton has put together, and you can all see them in the packet at pages four to six. Do, do you all have any questions about them or any thoughts or disagreements or anything you'd like to say? I, I will say, we looked these last December and found that the, uh, the criteria were all met. Um, and recommended the approval of the, of the rezoning um, with the conditions that were recommended at the time, and they're expensive conditions. Um, and so that is intertwined as well, but that doesn't mean that has to be where we are today.
And the plan, changing the plan too.
Absolutely, absolutely, but.
And, and one more kind of point of order. Which, which conditions are we discussing? Are we discussing the conditions as they were the last time they came, or are we doing with these red lines?
We're talking about this proposal today.
Yeah.
Not what was proposed in December.
So the, these red lines are the current language that we're discussing?
Um, I'm not sure what red line is.
Am I, am I in the wrong place on the?
Are you in the conditions? Yeah. Um, the conditions are intertwined, but yes, we can talk about the conditions too. By all means. In fact, I think it's probably appropriate to talk about it all together, but having a hard time separating it. But they're not interconnected. However, you would like to approach it and start. Yeah. And in fact, why don't we just, do you have questions or comments you would like to make? Let's not restrict it that way. On the conditions, on the, uh, uh, criteria for rezoning?
In, uh, what was, uh, condition eleven, I think, or was?
And these are the, these are the conditions. Yeah, go ahead.
Farmets, uh, it used to say in the interest of guaranteeing pleasing and unified character along frontages of Cochran Mill Road. And then there's, you know, one or two pages of inserted red tags. I, I don't understand why this was added. The old condition read fine to me.
Uh, Mike, this is the, these are the conditions that I think you put in there to try to deal with the unbuffered.
That's right. That's right. They were, um, additional requirements to try to control, um, the character of Cochran Mill Road. If there was, if it wasn't going to have buffers, it wouldn't just be anything, um, but it was, it's supposed to be a essentially like a functional main street, um, which is the whole point of pulling everything together. The Cochran Mill Road works as that kind of road if there's not, if there aren't going to be buffers on it. So that's why that was added. Um, letter A, you can see refers to both Cochran Mill and South, South Fulton Parkway. Letter B only refers to South Fulton Parkway, just basically saying they're not going to be blank walls facing South Fulton Parkway. This is again, assuming the variance, um, uh, and then letter C, they're just some sort of light urban design sort of stuff to, to control the character along, along Cochran Mill Road specifically.
So Mike, Mike, just to clarify, so if the variance is denied, then those conditions go away?
Uh, that's right. So you would, you would make whatever recommendation you find to feel appropriate, but yes, since those are all about the open buffers, I would say that those in particular, I would, I would, I would want to look through and make sure I would agree on all of these. Um, I may not, but, um, yeah, that one in particular, I would say those would go away. Yes.
I guess I'll throw a comment in there. Um, you know, um, regarding the buffers, I, I don't see why we as a city have fought to do things very differently from anywhere else around Atlanta. And now we'd start making exceptions for that. You can go to any suburb around Atlanta and find exactly what is being proposed here. And we have intentionally tried to do things differently. And, uh, so with that, I, I would, with regards to the variance for the buffers, I, I would be, uh, quite opposed. Um, it's, it's interesting verbiage too. You know, you talk about twenty-two hundred feet road frontage or long Cochran Mill. Well, really it's like on both sides of the road, so it's like forty-four hundred feet.
A frontage, that's correct. Yeah.
Right. I mean.
It's a road length twenty-two, right?
Right. Because, you know, if his property were all on one side of the road, then he'd be asking for forty-four hundred, you know, um. Is there not any verbiage about like connecting a property like this, maybe across like a, a major thoroughfare like South Fulton Parkway? Like in other words, we're combining this five hundred and twenty-six acres to allow for a village. Uh, and it, it's cut in half uh, with by South Fulton Parkway. And I can understand it across like Cochran Mill, which is like more of a secondary road. Um, but it, you know, the, it just seems disjointed to me, and it's just personal opinion, of course, but, anyway, that's a, that's an aside. I think, uh, with regards to the variance, I'm, I would be quite opposed because that's, that's, that zoning is exactly what we have put in place to make ourselves different. I, I think the, just to clarify, Mike, I think if I've reached, if I mistake this, please correct it. Uh, I think the question is, do we have anything in the, in the code that says that a property for purposes of rezoning, um, that's bisected or turned into four quadrants, that the property is now four parcels instead of one big property for purposes of rezoning? I don't think so, but.
No, so we, this is an assemblage of, of parcels, so it's not just, it's not.
Seven parcels, right.
Right, right. So, um, that's not uncommon at all in rezoning that people would be in, bring in an assemblage of separate parcels. I don't think the underlying parcel structure is important in, I'm not sure I understand.
No, it's a division by the.
Right, yes, right, right. So, right, so these situations, um, as I, I think I started to say maybe earlier, um, in the discussions of the zoning and the application of the buffers and, um, how the, from the very beginning, how the villages were intended to work, none of those models, um, uh, when we modeled how a village might look, right? There was an LCI program, um, an LCI study of, of a model village, and those original three village sites, those were not bisected in this way. Um, so it's just, it's something different than, um, what was considered. Um, uh, actually, I should say the one, the southern village, which is now Merrill Park and Palmetto, does cross Cochran Mill Road and did originally. So Cochran Mill Road did, did cross that in the original, um, conception of it. But, um, uh, in general, this, the way this is in, in four, not quite equal pieces, but, uh, uh, si- four significant chunk, um, is a unique, a, a unique situation and, and and not really well considered in the original writing of the, uh, of, of the ordinance or the, or the company.
But it is not, uh, it doesn't mean it's, uh, it can't be considered one property for purposes.
Absolutely correct.
I, I, I guess where I think it's disjointed is when you think of a village, you think of like, uh, community, uh, walkable, close knit, um, you know, and you're, of course, there's future provisions for potential shopping, whatever, right? Uh, probably restaurants, worship center, whatever, right? All in this one area. But like, when you have a major thoroughfare, you're, you're really, you're building out like really separate things going on. It's not
Right.
village in the intention of like.
Right.
I mean, you look at a, a hamlet, for example, and we have pretty specific language about like tightly clustered housing. Um, and you're almost doing like four of those and saying it's a village, but it's really not because, I mean, South Fulton. And you're almost doing like four of those and saying it's a village, but it's really not because, I mean, South Fulton, I mean, just. Stand out there, you know, and watch the trucks go by. Like, I mean, nobody's going to be like, oh, let me just walk across the street. Like, it's like trying to cross Bullsborough and Noonan.
I think that there's merit to that in terms of the north and south segments of this. Just for what it's worth, the, what we've been, what's been explained to us. What has been presented to us at least is that the concept in the core village area, the dark blue area up there. That the reason for reducing cock the size, the buffers on Cochrane Mill is to accomplish exactly what you're talking about. To accomplish the look and feel of a village that's connected, as opposed to having a three hundred fifty, a three hundred foot. Difference between the commercial residential on either side of Cochrane Mill. So I think that's the purpose. Now that. That extension goes beyond the core village. What's being proposed goes down into the red, which is the mixed use. Uh, almost, just almost to where the, not quite to where the cemetery is. So what's being proposed for the reduction of Cochrane Mill buffers, south of the Parkway. Is for the town center, and I think the rationale, I'm not saying it's the right rationale or anything else. It's just the rationale is to try to create that village, that tightly knit pedestrian walkable village. It does extend down into the mixed use red part, but that is not being proposed north on Cochrane Mill Road. And and you know, there are a couple of ways for there to be walkability across underneath. There there's a, the the. The 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 underpass that was created when South Fulton was built. And it was created with the vision that that would be in fact a way to cross over, cross under safely, South Fulton Parkway. That was the idea originally. And then I think it's being suggested that there's a bridge to the west that perhaps there's a. A connection that could be made there, but nonetheless, it's not the same kind of connection or walkability as there, it's looking for in this proposal. South of South Fulton Parkway.
Well, and and that goes to my first point is. You know, I I can see, you know, building a village, maybe on a secondary road. Like Cochrane Mill. There could possibly be. A exception for that, but definitely not like road frontage or open on South Fulton that. But it really, that that, that's kind of like a. Going back to like my original thought, but you know, the, I I just find the disjointedness with South Fulton like. What I was just asking if there was maybe specific verbiage that would say, you know, a. A very prime thoroughfare. Breaking apart a village doesn't seem very village like.
You're talking about, you're talking about the regulations. You're talking about changing regulations. Adding language to the regulations.
Well, I'm asking if there were, obviously, there's not, you would have.
Relate to what John's saying here. Yeah, this is a. Development of Merrill Park. It's not the village of Merrill Park. Our our zoning uses the term village as in a village district, so. There's, there's nothing in the conception, and I'm asking staff here, there's nothing in the conception of a village district. That would mean that it couldn't have. A greater village with subcomponents, nothing preventing that.
That's correct.
Concept of village district.
That's correct. The requirement, there is a certain minimum density that makes it difficult to break it up too much unless you go very vertical. But that, you're right.
John, there was I hearing that you were. Against the variances around for South Fulton Parkway, but.
That's not even negotiable in my.
Possibly for Cochrane Mill.
It it would be possible for Cochrane Mill, but then now we also have to consider that it is a scenic byway. And so like, there's already additional buffer rules because it is a scenic byway. And now we're not just eliminating normal buffer requirement, we're eliminating. What would be added buffer requirements because it is a scenic byway, but you know, it's. The the face of Chattahoochee Hills is gonna change significantly. It's already gonna change significantly with Merrill Park. I mean, when you draw it out on a map. It's pretty obvious, you know, Cochrane Mill is going to be changed significantly and. So I would be inclined to. Keep the buffer requirements as they originally are intended. Because, I mean, just loosening up that when you combine it with what's already there, I mean, you're you're creating. Alpharetta or, you know, some other. Town, and and that's not what we're trying to be.
To clarify, you were talking about the development that is in Palmetto that comes right up to Wilkerson Mill.
That is correct.
And and that's, there are no buffer requirements in City.
It's already gonna change significantly just from that.
As a scenic byway, Cochrane Mill is compromised already, I think. I'm sorry to say, by virtue of that development. Doesn't mean we have to do it here, but it's, it's, the future is gonna look different. And and so I guess one option is is to say no buffer. Not recommend approval of the buffers as proposed. Another is to limit it. Perhaps not along South Fulton, but perhaps the reduce the amount of buffer on Cochrane Mill. It's an option to consider.
There's so many elements at play here, like the rezoning of the village we addressed, but now we're having to readdress that. And if it's a no on the variances or changing of the variances, we'd be back here again, having to. Vote on yes to rezoning to a village because we're not approving this.
It would, I guess, depend on the nature of your recommendation, the nature of what city council does with it. It could, if they, if city council denied the variance and approved the zoning, then might. Be able to approve it with language approving that original site plan, the original zoning plan that was that was presented. Or they might want to start, I don't know. It would depend on how city council responded.
Okay, I feel as if there's actually three items here. There's buffers on Cochrane Mill. There's buffers on South Fulton and the overall village. It just seems like this is a lot at one time to try to make a decision on when they're all so intertwined. I don't know what the process is in that.
Well, we can entertain a motion. One of the processes would be to consider. There are several iterations of this, but one process would be, one possibility would say to approve the rezoning. But not approve the variance, to approve the rezoning or approve. Part of the variance or recommend not approving any of them. And those are the iterations. We could postpone for additional information. I'm not sure what that additional information is. Because it is specific, you have to be postponing for receiving addition.
Thing that I'd be uncertain on, if we were voting on the zoning, on conditions. But all those conditions have been written on the outcome that the variance is approved. Then what would those conditions look like if the outcome that the variance was not approved?
I think we would, as part of this discussion, we'd go through those conditions right now. All those you were talking about earlier would be, would not be part of the conditions.
I see.
So I think, and additionally, there's one condition in there that says that we're approving the concept plan. As well, if we approve the zoning, and I think we need to delete that if we, if we change the the buffer. So their. Answer to your question is it's it's a some would buy, some would not. And I think we'd want to talk about that. And walk through, make sure.
Against a village, you know, and I'm, and it's certainly in the right area. It's where the city opposed. I just think with the, with the the recommendations here, this. If we give that, you're giving up everything. You're also setting precedent for future build outs. And part of what makes Chat Hills what it is, is our zoning. So I think keeping the buffer requirements as as they are. Helps reinforce who we are as a city. And. You know, it it, I just, as an aside, because like I don't want to just say no, right? But like, what if there were less buffer requirements closer to the Merrill Park project where it's already gonna be what it is? And, you know, like if he had the village feel. With less buffer requirements, maybe down closer to Merrill Park, but left left it buffered up on top.
I think we want to keep it within preferred preferred village areas that's designated, which is around South Fulton with the idea being the traffic will. Most of the traffic, a big portion of, and that's what the D R I.
Yeah.
Do, would go into South Fulton. So.
Can I say something? Because I'm listening and. Would I, at the end, I made a suggestion, and the more I thought about it, like, I think we should consider it. Why not come up? It wouldn't take much. We, you know what you want. I've heard it, I've seen it. I'm new here, but I've seen it, and that's why we moved here. You know the size of the village, you know the buffer. Put together a master plan. And even give it to Mr. And let him have a first shot at it. And if it, and you know exactly, then you know the buffer is gonna be there, you know it's gonna be small, you know, it's gonna be walkable. And if you want to do it, fine, and if not, then you open it up to other builders, and it's what we want. And it meets exactly the requirement. You wouldn't be having these meetings, having to go through all these variances. It will be built in. The 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 plan is there. I, when I spoke to the, because it would take nothing to put it together and to put it out. He could have, write a first if he was allowed it.
Well, it's something the city council may want to consider.
Okay.
I honestly don't think that's part of our our. By the way, just to clarify, you were saying two thousand acres? This is five hundred and twenty-six acres, right? So I think you might have had that confused with the Palmetto.
To, right, to two thousand acres promoted by Mr. Merrill includes the, well, I think it's closer to eighteen hundred anyway. Includes the Palmetto project, which I think is around thirteen hundred.
Not in the materials he gave me. I'll I'll research.
Yeah, this one is five hundred and twenty-six acres, it's not two thousand acres. So I think it's still a big development. It's the first, the first village. And I, John, I tend to agree with you, I think. I think there, I don't think we need a lot of them, but I think.
Excuse me, I just pulled it out. I'll just read it to you.
That's okay, that's okay. It's not, it's not factual, Mitchell. Gave it to me. Let's be for us. It's five hundred and twenty-six acres, not two thousand acres, okay? And we can look at that later, but it's not, let's be for us. Let's be for us.
This piece is five twenty-six.
Yeah.
The other.
Okay. Okay, it's not, and it's not in the Chattahoochee.
Right.
And the comments that I've heard so far, based on the U D C, as far as the buffering requirements. I guess the comp plan does have like a small window, window where, I guess. Buffering could be considered, but then when we look at the U D C. As far as South Fulton Parkway and Cochrane Mill, then those exceptions are taken away.
That's correct. We need a variance.
We need a variance, okay.
That's correct.
So I guess, you know, based on what I've heard and what I've read. The comp plan does allow for a village. As far as the buffering requirement, I'm of the opinion that we as a commission should stick. To those buffering requirements as identified in the U D C. It's not. I want to see if there's other discussion.
Well, I think we've heard some thoughts on that.
I I tend to agree with you. This is why we're here, really, because the ask for the reduction in buffers. Where we were when we looked at it months ago, me having some of these.
On the.
Nigh the approval of the buffers as asked.
As proposed.
As proposed, yes.
All of the, all of the, all the.
All but for South Fulton and Cochrane.
And, okay, well, I think that's it all. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there further discussion on that?
Could you just tell me what he just said? I didn't hear.
I made a motion that we didn't offer requests for South Fulton and Cochrane.
And it's been seconded, if we have two seconds. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. The motion carries, I think unanimously, is that correct? Now, let's move to the rezoning. The zoning request. I have, I frankly appreciate the overall general comments, but there are fourteen factors we're supposed to look at. Mike has analyzed them. And I'm, from from my standpoint, I really haven't changed my perspective personally from where we were last, when we took our vote last. And I think the rezoning is fine, but we would have to make sure that we're not approving this as the concept plan. Since we were not, we're not voting to approve the variance or recommend approval of the variance. And so I think we better take a look at the conditions before we move much further, if that's all right with everybody. Again, there are twenty-eight conditions. I do not think we have time or need to go through every one of them. But we should discuss those that may have implications here. The first one I see is condition number four. And first of all, there was a, there was an improper date in there, right? But but I don't think we can. Agree that this plan there serves as the concept plan, so I think we would have to delete. Condition number four.
So I would say, if you wanted the old concept plan, that date would be correct, but you're inclined to not approve a concept plan at all.
I'm not even sure it's alive anymore.
Gotcha.
So. Let's see. These are not, these are not kind of up and down kind of questions. Why did six and seven come out, Mike?
Do, yeah, I was gonna ask if you wanted me to walk through the red lines.
No, no, not.
So six and seven was just an attempt. Those were all duplicative of information that's already in the zoning.
I thought so.
And right.
Okay, that's fine. My list here. And just clarification, access to the cemetery, that's public access or what's that, what is, whose access?
It, just to make sure that the. New number ten.
Yeah, yeah.
I should provide, I mean, access to the city owned cemeteries, right? Just just that they wouldn't block access from.
People who wanted to come in and.
Right.
Look at the cemetery, they could.
That's, that's correct. It is city owned property and the city could put whatever security it wanted to on there if it wanted to prevent people. But we just wanted to make sure that access wasn't blocked by the by the applicant.
Okay, I think that, now, there was a, there was a recommendation. In one of the comments. Ms. Searle, I believe, that I don't think was quite addressed in the rebuttal, and that is that there's gonna be a long build out. And should there be a fence or some protection around that cemetery? Now, since that's not owned by the. By the applicant to develop here, that's probably a question for the city, isn't it?
Yes, it is city owned property, that's.
It's city owned property, so it's a good suggestion. If there's vandalism particularly, there's a good suggestion, but I'm not sure that's for. That's here, okay. It is, just for clarification, in eleven C five. Is is this what we're talking about with the Boulevard that it's gonna become?
That's actually the term is A V, so it's avenue, it's one of our thoroughfare typologies. It's in the. That's actually the term is A V. So it's avenue. It's, it's one of our third pair typologies. It's in the, um, that A V ninety dash fifty-six is in the zoning as one of the third pair typologies, ninety feet of right of way, fifty-six feet of, of pavement.
And where would that be?
That would be Cochran Mill Road through the center. I, I would, so we don't, I mean, this is, this is anticipation of a final build out condition and, and what the road typology might be at that point. So, um, um, I would not.
It wouldn't necessarily be depend on whether there's buffers or not.
No, no, um.
I don't think so.
Right, although it's not the only, the only, right. I was going to say, we don't need to define it now, except that we do want still to ask for the reservation so that the right of way could be expanded if it has to. So the reservation of fifteen feet on, I'm sorry, forty-five feet on each side of the center line would give that ninety foot wide, uh, right of way that it might eventually need to be. Um, but we don't need to define that, that.
I don't think.
Right of way type if we're not, if, if the buffers remain.
Did I see some?
Uh, right. That's right. That would be, yes.
That's just, okay. Um, there are a couple of.
But again, that would only be if it was going to not have the buffers. If the buffers are there, no need really for street parking. It would probably be out of character.
Um, I'm not sure we need to re- remove that at this point. Um, or do we need to?
So honestly, that's in the public right of way anyway.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
There are a couple of items in here where staff, where you are, you are making some suggestions though in yellow.
Right, so.
Thirteen is one of them.
Right, so yellow, right. We've been over, the applicant has been, been over this and we, um, uh, as we discussed the, uh, conditions and, and, and what they should say, we kind of came to an impasse, what staff was looking for and what the applicant was looking for. So, um, um, in, yeah, the first one there, number thirteen, the applicant wanted to identify the location of, um, a, a connection that is required in the zoning. If they're property of a certain size next door to a village or hamlet, you have to provide an easement to connect. And, um, staff would say that that easement should connect in with the, um, the regular street network. Um, the applicant wanted to put it in the southwestern corner where it would come off of what they've identified as the resort property. Um, uh, that's that purple down at the, uh, uh, the lighter purple, I guess, kind of periwinkle color down there, um, uh, the southern, the southern portion.
Um, and you're recommending that you don't take that suitable.
I would recommend not identifying a site at this point. Um, uh, but the applicant would like us to, um, sort of lock that down unless they, unless what happens next door is of such a, uh, a nature that they want to change it.
Why being clients follow staff's recommendation. Um, that's my thought about it, but, um, if, if you would on sixteen, I'm not sure I understand what's being reserved there for the city.
Sixteen?
New sixteen.
Yeah, that's the, um, so I, I made a reference to that just, just a minute ago. That's a reservation of, uh, of, of their property, of the applicant's property, um, along the, um, the, the frontage of, um, Cochran Mill Road. Um, forty-five feet from the center line. So basically forty-five feet from the center line, that allows that ninety foot eventual right of way. Now it's a sixty foot right of way, but if the road is going to grow, we'll need additional right of way. So it, it says that the applicant needs to reserve that space. Now, if it's in buffer, it's essentially reserved anyway.
No, I get it.
Um, but, yeah.
I understand what you were going for there. Thank you for the explanation. Um, and eighteen is the, and by the way, th- this is seventeen and eighteen are not to be ignored. The, uh, the applicant has, um, uh, uh, agreed to provide location plan for a fire station and for a, uh, school, as I see it, an elementary school. If I'm reading this correctly, and that's my question about eighteen, is eighteen that site supposed to be in a, in the development or is that?
Yeah.
Purpose of left open?
In the, in the development.
You might want to use the same phrase that you've got in seventeen about incorporated into the development.
Right.
You might want to use that.
Okay.
It's really a certification.
Okay.
Um, i- i- is, are the references in nineteen to attachments A and B correct? Or should it be A and C? You might want to look at that.
I'm sorry.
In, in the parenthetical in nineteen, the first parenthetical, first bracketed, second bracketed item.
Attachments A and B.
Yeah, is that right? Or is it A and C?
Um, A and B, well, I could take another look at it. A and B is what.
If you would take a look at that.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I think, yeah.
And a, as far as your comment below about, uh, the applicant's request for expected, I don't think in Greta, it's expect, I think it's what they're actually incurred.
Right, based on the, the traffic plan or the traffic study.
Yeah, right. So I think it's, I think it's actually, uh, so I, I think the expected may not be necessary, but that's my view of that. Um, does everybody, any, if anybody want to talk about any of these, I'm moving through them kind of quickly at this point, but I think, I think where it's going is, uh, conditions as recommended by.
As recommended last half, anything to do with the buffer had been struck.
And mostly that would be.
Mostly those three. Yeah, mostly that number eleven gets.
Mostly eleven.
Yeah.
And anything else that we may be skipping over right now as you move through it, Mike? Does that make sense to you, Mike?
Uh, yeah, do you want to strike eleven in its entirety? Cause some of that language. Right.
Entirely.
Some of that language was in, so basically what it said, you can see, um, what's in black and then what's been crossed out there at the bottom of page, uh, page two, I'm sorry. And then the cross out under letter C had been a part of that.
Um, yeah.
Honestly, that, it's okay for that to go away without the, without the, uh.
I, I think the real recommendations of the stuff that it's called for, for unbuffered.
Yeah.
Just doesn't apply.
Right.
Uh, from our recommendation.
Right.
Um, twenty-one.
Right, so that language actually changed. I, I wrote that note in there, the applicant request elimination of the condition. That language actually changed since the applicant last saw it. So he didn't specifically request elimination of the, that language. It had been, um, um, it, the previous version had said that there would be no connection, um, to the gravel roads. And that's what he objected to. Um, the language that's in there now just refers to what's in the zoning, which says, um, no more than, um, twenty-five lots, twenty-five homes would connect, would be allowed to connect to a gravel road or to, or to be served, as I think it says, be served by a gravel road, which, um, means that it also applies to an internal gravel road. Um, you couldn't have more than twenty-five lots on even an internal road.
Well, I think that's been a sensitive issue for the city. So we probably need.
I also have a question about where we land with the site plan having from what was in the past and now that being something different, how does that get approached in the condition?
The site plan?
Item four. Item four is.
Okay, so what about?
So it's not the concept plan. It's not an approved concept.
Okay.
Okay. We're talking about deleting.
And number four, well. It also lists that date.
It's the wrong date. Um, I think it's the wrong date.
The school. Fulton County Public Schools will be the.
Well, actually that data is correct.
I, I guess my question is, though.
Mike.
Yes.
I think we have.
With saying, if you say yes to the concept of the village, we are not saying yes to a plan for the village.
So i- i- if so, then you are, if you don't tie them to a site plan, then they are not limited to a particular site plan. Um, the idea is to tie them to what they've said they're going to do. So, well, at, right, whatever that, right, whatever that is. So that, that September twentieth version is the one that came before you all originally. Um, if you didn't tie them to that and you tied them to nothing, again, as, as I just said, I think it's good to, to tie them to some sort of site plan. Um, the question is whether you want to say now, this is what it is, or you want to leave that to council, or I guess you talked about the request for additional information.
It would be confusing, um, to tie it to this site plan at this point. I think it would be confusing. It opened the door for this interpretation.
The original site plan?
No, this.
This one, yes, I wouldn't tie it to this one if you haven't approved the zone. Absolutely. I mean, the variance, absolutely.
Right. So I think the date is probably correct.
So at this point, your recommendation to council would be to just strike the language on site plan?
Well, the land, it's, technically, yes, I think that's safe. I think that's the honest, because I don't think we're going back and reapproving the September. September site.
Okay. I'll probably add in the, in, in the memo and note, uh, staff recommends adding a, a site plan reference of some sort to it. I think that's important.
Not just.
Right, that's right. That's right.
Uh, it does not have to be approved as part of the assembly, correct? You prefer it, you prefer it.
It is, right, right. It's excellent question. So the city council would have to approve a concept plan before you can approve a preliminary plat and we can approve dual plans. And so the concept plan can happen.
Actually.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
So, just as kind of a point of order. You know, section three, three, where it lays out the content of applications, a site plan and a concept plan are required by the application. So if our recommendation to denial of the variance has essentially rendered that site plan, uh, no longer relevant, then what are we really reviewing? How can we rezone something if we don't have a required part of this mission? I think we could defer.
Now, now, my understanding was that the concept plan was, my understanding was the concept plan was not required as part of the application.
The concept plan itself is not. It's a separate process, a subdivision process rather than rezoning process. But this site plan with the conditions, um, so to get a change in the, um, in the concept plan, that just takes one meeting, well, two, planning commission recommendation, city council approval. A change to the site plan, uh, would require zoning modification, which is a much more involved process.
We can make a recommendation to council of approval with zoning. Following the, follow up with, uh, a site plan that meets the requirements for the buffer and the variance.
That's right. I, I would recommend language to that effect, right? Council approve, approve a site plan as a part of the, um, a part of the rezoning. Um, and they can decide what that site plan is. You can leave it to them to decide that, I suppose. They can request something from the applicant or say we already have something they can.
The recommendation, sorry. So it's, it's consistent with the den- denial of recommendation to denial of variance. Well.
I, i- i- it's a catch twenty-two in a way, but I, I mean, I, I s- I would say we could recommend approval for the village, but we still need the recommended site plan. Right? So is it just pending that? Is that what we're trying to really decide? Yeah.
Pending a site plan that meets the requirements with the buffers and brace.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we can. Make a move.
Well.
Who, I mean, pending, I guess, Mike, we would leave that to staff to accept that. I mean, how, who would decide it?
The city council.
The city council.
City council, yeah. I, I tell you, we've had this thing in front of us so much.
Yeah.
Thank you much.
Okay. No, I'm not going to do that.
Thank you.
It's not me. To, to the village pending a site plan that meets the buffering requirements that are in place currently.
Can you repeat that please?
I'm gonna recommend that we approve the rezoning request pending that we receive a site plan that meets the buffering requirements that were denied. I mean, that are in place today.
And when you say we.
It means the city council.
City council?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Can, can we add, and any other requirements that we may deem reasonable?
Yes, we can amend that, but we were satisfied.
But is there a second?
Second.
Um, discussion. If you want to amend. Well.
So y- y- yeah, we should address what your intention is with the rest of the conditions also as a part of your motion.
That's awesome. Yeah, you're right. That's a lie. I, I think we can, let's, 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 let's address it. Conditions that are, um, inconsistent with the variance, the buffer variance denial.
Yeah.
Are, um, eliminated or modified.
Right, right. So if I may enumerate them, number four is concept plan.
Yeah.
Number two is site plan. I'm sorry, three is site plan. So both of those.
Three and four.
Three and four. Number, uh, eleven, which is the road, the, that, that long one.
Yeah.
Right, that's out. Um, uh, thirteen, fourteen are in red, but not related to.
Correct.
The buffer. Um, the hub not related to the buffer. Uh, building the cell phone. Okay, not related. Reservation should be a site plan, okay.
Staff recommended conditions.
Right, right. So it's really, I believe, just those three.
Those three, yes. I agree.
Okay. Yeah, except for those three.
Um, we have a motion in a second. Did you want to amend?
I, I don't know. I just want to say something. I don't, I don't know.
Um, well, it, we're discussing.
We're discussing.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have a concern that whatever we approve is not going to get done. Number one, and what happens if it doesn't? And number two, uh, and, and there's a, again, when I looked at the, um, the other development and I can just imagine, although I can't be sure, that when he was getting approval for the other property that he was promoting, having a two hundred and fifty room western. And he got it, but it's not there. And I bet that was, may have been a significant part. So what happens if he cancel it or does it revert back? Does the property, does, what happens? And I, I think, uh, we have to have some control over that.
A timeline on things.
Okay.
But that's for council to decide.
Okay, and also, um, the, uh, limitation on transferability. We don't know, we, we know him, that's fine. We don't want to transfer it to other people that we don't know.
Yeah, on, on the first, on the first point, um, I think e- every buddy who's been on the commission or the council recognizes that developments have gotten approved here that never get off the ground. And more developments got, have gotten approved and off the ground. And it's a larger policy question about whether, and I, I know there's people on the council that are very sensitive to this and are, and would additional requirements, would choose, uh, saying all the additional criteria.
So would that be a discussion? So that's a discussion with the council?
I believe so.
Okay, fine.
So, okay. Um, and, and I'm not trying to shut that off. I, I do think it's beyond our scope right now.
Okay.
Or authority right now. Um, as far as transferability and restricting transferability, that is going to be a legal question that the city attorney is going to have to weigh in on. Um, i- i- if the city council's ever moved in that direction. So I, I would think those are not, uh, I'm sure they're crazy. They're unrealistic questions. Um, they are, uh, um, this is probably not the venue for that.
Okay.
All the time and there's a master developer and pieces are sold off and developed within the development that happens all the time. So I would expect that.
We have a motion in a second. We're in discussion. Is there further discussion?
Yes, um, in three, three F, uh, where it talks about, this is the village, uh, uh, the rezoning amendment procedures, uh, if you're asking for density greater than allowed by right, then you have to have a development agreement in, in place. Um, you know, one, is, is there a development agreement in place? It was not included in the packet. And then two, I mean, I guess if there's not, does buying T D Rs count as being by right? What, what is, what is by right?
No, you're right. There needs to be a development agreement on this. That's intended to catch anything that requires T D Rs. All villages require T D Rs. Um, so, um, we have negotiated development agreement with the applicant. Um, I think we have the final version of that agreement. It hasn't yet been signed. Um, but it is, uh, entirely appropriate easier to have it signed or to add a condition. Um, uh, we actually had language in the previous versions. It didn't get restored into here, just saying that no, um, permits would be issued until, until that's done. There's other language in the zoning to make, that make sure that they require T D Rs, um, happen when they have to happen. Um, but to tie it to the specifics of the agreement, which do add. Um, happen when they have to happen, um, but to tie it to the specifics of the agreement, which do add more information. Um, um, uh, I think it is appropriate to add a condition requiring that to happen before any permits are issued. Um, or upon the signing of the, or upon the uh, approval of the zoning where it should be approved.
One of the things I'm uncomfortable with, we have not seen the development agreement that is. Strongly influences the nature of what this is gonna look like and so whatever we be.
So the development agreement i- really only covers the application of the T D Rs. And how they might be used, and it it lays out basically all the choices that are in the, in the T D R ordinance, um, I'm happy to catch you.
It will, yeah.
Would any of that be affected, the agreement that's in, out there right now, by us changing the buffer requirement, was, would that affect that agreement? Okay.
But it does, I mean, the, the T D Rs are the trade off, right, so I mean, the trade off to get this zoning is that the.
Right, right, they are required.
Those T D Rs that the city gets are to the city.
Right, so we don't get fourteen hundred um, T D Rs immediately upon the rezoning, they step through the um, the development and, well, so there are a number of options, options. Um, if they choose the perpetual fee option, um, that would just be applied, um, we'd receive the fee every time property sells, every time it gets resold perpetually. Um, again, depending on the um, the method that they use, though, we would get them as the different phases get developed, so they only have to. Uh, provide those, the proportion required by that phase when that phase happens, so we get them as they step through the development, we don't get them.
And Mike, it's true, the development agreement has to be approved by the city council, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have no say over it, of course, but it. But it's in, but it's in the amendment process, and that's what we're recommending here.
Yeah, yeah, so you're suggesting putting in, re- putting back in the condition.
Just a condition saying, right, right, that no permits will be issued until that's done, I I I believe upon, based on negotiation on the development agreement, I I don't um. Uh, think there's uh, any problem with us getting a sign, but I do think it's, it would be an appropriate condition to add, an important condition to add, yes.
Okay, so.
Our previous.
To add that.
To add that, yes.
Okay, so we. We've got. You know, no site plan, uh, no concept plan, which I do see as a requirement of an amendment, uh. No development agreement. We've got very little in the way of the narrative, it's one paragraph. Talking about how close we are to the airport, there's hardly anything that describes the project. When I look at the. Proposed use plan, which is no longer valid. It's just. Color blobs that describe, okay, you've got some stuff here, but it's really not. Truly not a plan, I don't know that that. Would, is this consistent with what we should expect for a concept plan at this stage, is this adequate?
When, yeah, so specifically, the concept plan section in the codes, that is, we want a detailed first phase, but future phase to be bubbled.
Okay, I would agree, it's detailed first phase, yes.
But you're also correct that that one doesn't apply, right, because the variance, yeah, that one's not the right one.
And I, I know I'm hogging the mic, but I love my stuff. In light here, uh, so in. In the analysis, the uh. Point seven, I think we touched on a little bit on the conditions. Uh, wastewater treatment. Uh, the analysis is that Fulton County is running a new service. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. It, the analysis is that sewer is coming to this, so.
It's, it's all but operational.
All all but operations.
Yeah, on on Wilkerson Mill Road at the Little Vaughn, uh, there used to be a. Something still operating, but it's um, the pipe and the pump site there, we're finishing up um, the electrical permit. Um, they don't have their um, certificate yet on the electric permit, but it's it's basically.
Okay, so the. It's like. Yeah. And. What about water? It it's also on water?
Yeah, there's a a a large eighteen inch or twenty four inch pipe running down Cochran Mill Road.
Yeah, I I mean, I've seen the fire hike. At about withdrawals or something, but it's it's on water too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that that was it, that was the end of.
Any further discussion on the motion? So we have a motion and a second, it's been amended. A motion to amend it, yeah, can amend that would be to add the reference to the uh.
Right, the three, the three things I have are um. I think receiving a site plan that meets the buffer requirements, um, removal, but with cadip, that or three, four, and eleven, and then um. Uh, the development agreement requirement, so city will not issue permits without a signed development agreement.
Now that amendment was an amendment to the motion, so let's vote on that amendment first.
Yeah.
Um, which is the amendment to add the reference to the, to the development agreement.
Just, just so we have it on record, um, for parliamentary procedure, Mr. Hayes, you made the motion, right? Do you make, you make the original motion?
I did.
I thought you made the, okay, you second, okay, never mind it, because I just want to make sure that the original person accepts the motion.
Okay, so what we're voting on is the motion to amend the conditions to add a condition regarding the development agreement, correct? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
So who made the motion to amend? Okay. And second, the motion to amend, okay, thank you, sorry, I thought you were talking about the original motion.
Who voted, did everyone vote aye or whether?
Uh, this is just on the amendment.
Just on the amendment, so it's unanimous, now we're back to the original motion, um, and let's restate that motion if you would.
Um, the motion to, uh, the motion to approve the rezoning. Um, uh. Pending uh, receipt of a site plan that meets the buffer requirements, um, with the conditions less numbers three, four, and eleven. Um, and with the addition of a commit, a condition requiring. Sign development agreement covering T D Rs, uh, which is what the development agreement is, um, uh, before the city issues any permits on.
I think it was staff recommended conditions, and that picks up the ones.
Thank you, okay, yeah, yeah.
Staff, staff, yeah. That picks up the yellow.
So that, that clears up all the yellow questions, yeah, good, okay.
Can I ask one question, is the um, the rezoning, is that where it turns it into a village?
Yes, village rezoning.
Versus what it is.
Rural.
Rural.
Um, so we have the motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Object.
Okay, so it's four to three, is that correct? So the motion carries uh, four to three. And that is a motion to recommend to the city council. That's, that's what it is.
Right.
Well, I believe that's the hearings, um. So let's move to the remainder, is there no old business, no old business, no new business, a little trouble. Staff reports?
May, may I, may I comment on something, yeah, that just happened, so. Essentially, we agreed that conceptually. There could be a village. Assuming we have an appropriate site plan. That is all that, so essentially, we didn't really vote on. Anything.
Well, I think we did, and and it's the the motion that was voted on.
Okay.
It was a recommendation to city council to approve with those.
Yeah.
Those gentleman, got it.
Again, no old business, no new business, any staff reports?
No staff reports.
Um, do I have a motion for adjournment? Second?
Seconds.
All in favor, say aye, aye, meetings adjourned.
Need a drink. I need a drink.